Okay, well, let's call a meeting to order. Um additions to the agenda.
I just have one additional resignation order.
See that?
And I put that down.
Okay. Um alright, I guess with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I second.
Okay, seconded. Discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same side? Okay, agenda is approved. Alright, for minutes, we have four. Start with the regular minutes, and I think everything else was just interviews.
You're wired. I'm good, thank you, thank you.
Okay, on the fourth set of minutes, where we went into executive session. Amber brought this to my attention. There's no, there's no motion on here for, for Dr. Ziegler's contract. Okay, because that was in executive session, but technically, we can't make motions in executive session. So we'll remake a motion later on in the, when we talk about contract. So for the meeting, so we'll, we'll get it all corrected, but it'll be later on, so. I, I forgot that that is a rule. Anybody have any corrections or changes on other minutes? I think the middle two were just interviews. Okay, if not, we can move on to board bills, March board bills. Is Amber's West River Student Services, is that a contracted service for, it looks like for speech? What do you guys have, any questions on bills, on March bills? Alright, our balance sheet. And I noticed on, on our balance sheet, we have a, a nice amount in building fund. Is that the, was that the Dunn County grant?
No, that's for money, for your taxes.
Oh, oh, that's why that just came in. Does that Dunn County grant one building fund then too? Or what is it?
When we, when we got it, it, it went into segment interest, so I'll have to do a, just for the amount that we're gonna use for the building grant, I'll just have to transfer just that small portion.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. No questions on balance sheet, but your revenue? Some taxes are in, but not quite, not all yet. Anybody have any questions on revenue? If not, as we already took expenditure. And if nothing on expenditure, we're already just through activity. Is there any questions on any of them? If not, we can entertain a motion to, to do the whole consent agenda, that's all of them.
Nice one.
Okay, we got, we got a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon, any discussion? Questions or anything? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Right, Activity Directors report.
Mrs. Mason give us anything here?
Yes. There are thirty-one elementary volleyball girls out. Thirty-two junior high track kids. And twenty-four high school track kids.
Wow.
And that's all I have.
Alright, that's it. Right, the principal reports, Mr. Patterson?
I promised you last month that I, well, I spoke short last month, and I promised you a spiel this month, so.
Okay.
So, um, all the classes are filled, I'm gonna start something. Just in case you haven't seen my calendar. Been up over the last, since January. Uh, so before we get into any of the handouts, first thing I want to share is that we, Taylor received another grant. It's called an Innovation Grant for ten thousand dollars. An opportunity for teachers to fill out grants for innovative ways of teaching and innovative ways of their approach in their education as well. So, I'll tell the short story, and then I'm gonna have Kelly and Robin kind of just share, they were the two that wrote the grants together. I'll share, you know, that pro, I'll have them share that process and what they hope to, to use the greenhouse for. So we received ten thousand dollars towards a greenhouse for the school. In all the ways that we can use that, I will pass the buck over to our, our grant writers. So I'll let them kind of share with you guys how we plan to implement that.
We applied for the Innovation Grant for a sensory garden. We even given through county grants to rural farmers before. So we knew it would be strong enough for our rural winters and summer winter, summer weather. So our goal is to have the students learn how to grow their food and, and explore food and grow through the seasons, even in the cold climate. It's hard side, twenty, or fourteen by twenty. It comes with a heater, we're still exploring if it will be natural gas or propane. But we have the spot picked out, we had the kids measure it out. They stood in the corners like the corner posts. And today, we've planted some seeds in milk jugs for winter sowing. If the greenhouse is up at time, we'll transplant those out into the greenhouse. If they're not, we'll send it, start home with the kids. But they're really excited, we're really excited to build that into our curriculum and build that life skill into their skillset.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be all through preschool through fourth grade, we'll be involved in it. And then, um, like I said, we're still figuring out if we're gonna get Chinese lab or papers. I talked to the lady today about working the greenhouse, we just have to decide those few details and hopefully call in some favors to help with a few things that we need help with. And then we can get it ordered, just gonna take so two to three weeks once we order it. So once we get those details, we get it ordered, hopefully by the end of the school year, we'll have it up and running. So we're really excited about it.
We're planning to put it behind, so to the north of the school, like right up against the trees. So it'll be protected from the northerly winds, but get full sun pretty much all day, all season long, all year long. So we're pretty excited about it.
That was our first one. We'll kind of move into the normal stuff. So we, uh, through February, we've been working on integrity for our word of the month and really building that character trait within our students and, and teaching them that integrity is every day, it's honest, it's being trustworthy, you know, how that plays out. Through March, we moved into selfless. And then just the idea and the thought and the actions of putting others before yourself and what that looks like. And it's already been awesome, we're just a few weeks into it. But the students seem to already have kind of a nice firm grasp on what that means and how it looks and how they can be selfless in school. And you know, we always hope that they take that home with them. So we're working on selfless through, being selfless through the month of March. Our class of the month, so again, a specials PE music award was Mrs. Scaly's class for this month. A reading curriculum update. I know last month I said I would hopefully have some finished details for you guys as we move forward. We decided to look at one more, just to be as thorough as we can as we look through these and what meets the needs of our students. Because that fifty thousand dollars has to be spent. We were pretty much close enough that we went through all of them, and so we thought, why not make sure we go through all of them that we can? Better will, and to send us some samples. So we got those samples, I think at the end of last week, if I remember right. And again, we're looking at that K through A level. So after that, the discussion will begin for future steps. And by April, we'll, we'll have our, our decision base, so just an update on that. If you want to look at, I think I kept it coming for myself. Student engagement data next. This was taken by our third and fourth graders, so combined. Okay. So again, the front page here will kind of explain the definitions of those different domains. But I really, this is probably one of my favorite survey datas to look at because we know that engagement's tied into achievement. If students are there and they want to be there, and they're engaged in their learning, and they love what they're doing when they're learning, then learning's gonna take place. So looking at the cognitive, just to kind of flip to the first page, that cognitive measures, measures a student's investment in school and learning. You can see there, we're, we're doing well in that aspect, only three, so you know, based on our numbers, that's about one student that took the survey, felt that they were disengaged. Compliance normally means that they're, they're gonna do the things because they have to do it type of deal. There's some more breakdowns on those definitions on the very last page. So compliant students are willing to complete the task because of their desire, desire to follow directions or rules. And then you have the committed again, which is a strong suit for that cognitive area. This year, students are attentive to the task because they find personal meaning and value in the task. So obviously, you want to be as many kiddos as you can up in that committed. But we do have a good, a good group who are, who are doing the things they do because they, they know, they understand how to follow the rules and the impact that that has as well. If you bounce down, or bounce across, I'm sorry, I skipped behavioral. So go get the behavioral. Again, that's another strong area. We have sixty percent of our students took this survey as committed. And then a combined ninety-four percent that were either compliant or committed. And then just a brief overview again for that behavior. Behavioral domain includes attendant, attendant suspension, participating in school activities, and being on time. Those same definitions would, would apply for the, for the subcategories there. If you look over the, the emotional, that's kind of where you'll notice like a gap as we look at this. Where you see, you see that high percentage of committed, you kind of see less in the middle. And then you, you definitely see a more of a disengaged when you get to the emotional component, which is, I'm sorry, students' emotions or feelings about the classroom, the school, a student's enjoyment of and a sense of belonging to the school, you know. So when I look at this, I, I, that's a target to, to go after, right? We want, we want kids to feel like they belong, we want kids to understand their value at school. We want that belongingness to increase. We had a strategic meeting last night, or yesterday afternoon, I'm sorry. And that was one of our focuses, was our SEL, and really getting a, a school-wide curriculum with that. We truly don't have that, that kind of foundational school-wide curriculum. So taking moves at that would definitely help because it provides those resources to our teachers to follow through on that SEL curriculum. But also with certain behaviors or, you know, even just needs that students need. They usually go to some tier two and tier three level interventions to help meet those students' needs. So maybe they can work through some things, whether it's happening at home or at school, and know that they're, they have that support because now we will have that support. So that's a, that was a big point of our strategic meeting yesterday, was getting that SEL curriculum to help meet the needs of our students. Because they all, they all go home and they all have their own life. And that truly carries it to our school building. So having our teachers and staff equipped to, to, to help them in those areas would be important, so. That was just a kind of a quick rundown, truly go through that, through those numbers more. Yep, and it was thirty-five, I believe, out of a possible thirty-seven. So there were a few that, that just missed the, the days in the windows to take these engagement surveys. Any questions on that before I move on?
And this is a cognate associated with the student improvement?
Yep. And that directly aligns with that strategic plan.
Was it first years of this survey, or is there multiple years out there?
There, there would be multiple years, yep, this is a yearly survey. Grades three through twelve take this survey.
It's considered the North Dakota student engagement, but is it specific to North Dakota at all? Or is it just some sort of a?
I don't know, I just know that they, they create it, and it takes longer to get the results because it goes to them first, and they analyze it, and then they push it back to us. Um, I'll have parent-teacher conference data for you guys at the next meeting as well. We wrapped them up last night, so still waiting to get some final numbers from some staff. If you look at our reading month calendars, it'll be the last thing I talk about. I should have brought this, I should have been proactive with this, brought it in February, since we're halfway through March already. But you can kind of glance over what we're doing, just the things we have, different experiences we have going on. You'll notice the chapters, we're doing a school-wide book together. And there should be questions attached with that each day. So again, we're encouraging reading one family, our, one book per family in our school. So we're encouraging that learning again, to go home and have the, the parents read with their kiddos. We've had the high school seniors came over to open it up for us, and they read their short stories that they've been working on. The D E A R is drop everything and read, so no matter what's going on in the day, we drop it, we're gonna pick up our books and we, we do some reading for fifteen-minute chunks. Tuesdays, we have mystery readers, and you can kind of look through, through those who we have. Mr. Timor got asked a lot of interesting questions, non-book related, yesterday. He was very fascinated with weapons and everything that, all the fun toys that Mr. Timor wears. Wednesdays, we're doing breakfast with our parents, and we're kind of doing that by grade level as well, followed by STEM activity, do some hands-on things that the parents and the students can do together. Seven was a popular day, which I anticipate a lot of staff members wanting back, dressed like a, students dressed like the teachers, teachers dressed like the students. The ones that dress like me, I'm apparently known as the best guy to the students, they all wore their best. So I wear best with my dress clothes, so. Couple other things to highlight, on the nineteenth, our first day back after this long weekend, we have, if you guys have heard of or seen Henry Blake's, I think he does some Bismarck News, he'll be coming out to the school. And because our, our theme is weather, so he's gonna be coming out and just giving a presentation on what he does and his experience with the weather. And I've, I've been at schools that he's come to, and he puts on a really good presentation for the kiddos and does a really good job of connecting with them. Crazy sock day, that is gonna be our Down Syndrome Awareness Day. So that'll be on the twenty-first, again, you see those chapters every day. We've been doing, kind of go, fast forward into the last week, we've been doing a book swap all month as well, where students can bring in some old books that they don't read anymore at home. And they can go up to a certain amount of books they can bring in, and then we're collecting all those. And then at the end of the month, they go in and they get to pick however many books they donated, they'll get to pick that many new books from other students' collection of, you know, kind of, kind of like a giant book recycling, you know, get some new materials to read. Also ongoing is our, we're doing some reading goals per class. So I always get this one wrong, so help me, from, for every one hundred minutes, we get two feet of duct tape with the goal to hold me to a wall. So pray that they're reading at home or I'm dropping. So that'll be on the twenty-eighth, so that'll be the very last day, kind of the grand, the grand finale of our reading month. And each class was assigned a, a weather phenomenon through, at the first day. So we're, there's, I take a few minutes and just share with the rest of the school what they weathered on their weather, so. We're only halfway through, but it's been a very, very busy month. And this is on top of everything else that goes on. But, but it's all good things, so. And that is my conclusion.
Alright.
Alright, Dr. Vogel's report, the Strategic Planning Committee met Tuesday, March twelfth, to discuss educational goals for the school district. Committee included President Hoff, Jesse Patterson, Chris Farts, Chelsea Christiansen, Superintendent Ziegler, Mr. Darren Varonco, and Mr. Ralph Weisberger, and Dr. Vogel. Updated plan will be shared at a future board meeting, and she would like to thank those that were able to. Mr. Zenz is no longer there.
He might actually be here.
Be here already. Dr. Vogel would like to thank those that were able to attend. Just as Mr. Patterson noted, conferences were well attended. She doesn't quite have the numbers yet, there's a few makeups, but she will have that at the next meeting. RACT course catalog will be shared with students for course registration for next year in the next few weeks. Ms. Frank contacted RATC to get, uh, to get on the time rotation for an anatomy table for next year. I'm not sure what, but it sounds interesting. And that's it for her.
Alright. That one, Dwayne dropped off, he come walking in the door, but.
Should have called back.
Should have called back quick and see if he's still like wanting to be on the phone. Just go to a dead spot.
Oh, here he comes.
Okay. Old business personnel, we have a superintendent evaluation. There he is. Hi guys. Do we have results, are we supposed to? Okay. And I have to go through the section by section, right? Okay. Did you skip this one again? Okay, so, so we have four of the five board members participating. And it looks like, according to the survey, we have satisfactory in every category. Okay, so for the survey, we have satisfactory in every category for the numbers. And now we get to go around and just indicate satisfactory or unsatisfactory on each, each area, so. I will start, goal and vision setting, satisfactory. Shannon?
Satisfactory.
Satisfactory.
Okay. Under the category, board relations, Dwayne?
Satisfactory.
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 And I had satisfactory as well. Human resource management, Shannon?
Satisfactory.
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 Curriculum and student services?
Satisfactory.
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 Alright, community relations, I'll say satisfactory.
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 Operations and resource management?
Satisfactory. Satisfactory.
Satisfactory.
And satisfactory, and that is the final line, so. And do we need a motion or anything on this, or is, that's just simply?
A motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Okay, so a motion to approve the entire survey?
As presented.
As, oh yeah, as, as presented, as we have all indicated.
Also moved.
Shannon moved. I'm a second. Second by John, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries, so evaluation's complete. Do you want some coffee? I made coffee.
What's that?
I made coffee.
I'll be good.
Did you mix it? Okay. Okay, that is complete. New superintendent, contract slash bonus, so. I do have a copy. So we need, we need an official motion, I guess, on, you know, the, the values we want to put on, on our contract. You know, we get discussed them, but. Uh, and then something I noticed, I believe we were doing, wanted to do a two-year contract, is that right? Okay, so we should indicate that too, this one shows as a one-year, but. I guess amend that or fix that, or however we do it. I guess amend that or fix that or however we do it, I don't know. So the, Mr. Ziegler has signed the contract electronically, just to get everybody on a comfort level with it, but it was, so it was wrong, it was a one-year, okay? The salary that was agreed upon, base salary was one oh two thousand five hundred. Okay, John and I negotiated that. So that's, you know, that's correct, so we would want a timeframe, a value, and then the. The bonus that was agreed on with Dr. Ziegler as well was, was the performance bonus up to ten thousand dollars a year, and that's what he agreed to, so. And then he had also asked for. One oh two five, year one, or one oh five, even, year two. Okay, so, so that's all agreed on, but we, you know, we should put that in a motion. Other info. The, the bonus plan is a little bit controversial as far as the legal team goes, okay, so. In your packets or. It's hot linked on the.
Yep, if you click on the link.
On the agenda. There's an email string that I, I had Amber put in here and it, you know, of course, typical email, you got to read from bottom to top. When I sent the contract to Rachel and asked her, you know, hey, can you put some verbiage in here indicating performance bonus and then, you know. What can we do for a performance bonus, she said, no, you can't do that. So. When she first sent back stuff indicating signing bonus, you know, that's all spelled out in the century code, signing bonus, no. And I replied back, no, we're not looking for signing bonus, so we can't do that anyway because he was under contract with another district. You're not supposed to use a signing bonus to steal him away. So she replied with an email, you know, regarding bonus, and I'll just read this so that we can kind of talk through this a little bit. She said, you indicated the board doesn't, doesn't want to give a signing bonus, but instead wants to give a performance bonus, as we discussed, that's not allowed. School boards only have the powers granted to them by the legislature and what you want to do isn't allowed unfortunately. The only bonus you're allowed to give a licensed employee without affecting their salary the following year is a signing bonus. So that's important without affecting their salary the following year. And the law doesn't allow you to give him a signing bonus because he's currently employed by a North Dakota district. You have, you really have two options if you want to move forward with the bonus idea. Okay, option one, tell him if he meets a certain criteria, the board will agree to offer him an amended contract for the following year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Option two, tell him if he meets the following criteria, the board will agree to offer him an additional salary of set amount. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I'm sorry, I got that backwards, twenty-four, twenty-five will be the year, and option two is the following year. In either scenario, the amount will be included as salary and he'd have a continued contract right to it the following year. It means that you can never offer him a contract with less than the total salary received the prior year. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, if anyone has any questions, so, of course, we had questions, there's some more. I didn't have any further correspondence with Rachel, you know, at, at that point. And then I, I did forward this to Alexis and she was, was kind of coaching us a little bit on this and I knew she had interest in it, so I just, you know, just kind of said, hey, FYI, here it is. And Rachel came, uh, Rachel, no, Alexis came back with. We disagree, we are very familiar with this section. That Rachel cites, it's actually was adopted as a result of a resolution proposed through North Dakota school boards, associations, delegate assembly. We assisted, assisted in drafting the bill and led the lobbying effort. If the board desires to continue pursuing the bonus idea, we would recommend consulting another attorney for a second opinion. Give us a call one day if you'd like to chat, so. So we have two opinions, I guess, here, you know, on, on the, on the bonus idea. We certainly have a clear option with Rachel where we get to the end of the year, we say, yeah, we set the criteria, you met it, we want to do it. We amend the contract before the end of the year and he gets, you know, the bonus that year, but then it's automatic for the following years, you know.
It has to be the amount that.
Did she give any? I, I didn't see any supporting evidence behind that opinion of hers. I, I, I don't know, you know, because she cited the century code sections, I looked at those. I, I didn't get it. Yeah.
She cited those only on a signing bonus, though.
Well, I think she misinterpreted, the original ask was, please see the attached contract, I'm looking for information regarding a bonus plan. And I think she just interpreted that as a signing bonus rather than a performance. But then her statement of that the board only has authority granted to them by the state, personally, I think that's the constitution upside down, I think we have local control. And this idea that we have to have a specifically outlined in century code what we can and can't do with compensation. I, I don't, I don't agree with that and I don't see that anywhere, so Rachel's interpretation, I, I think is off and I think. You know, Alexis somewhat agreed with that. You know, when I look at the whole process, like, the, we got legislatures out there, so we've got in century code that superintendent evaluation has to be done each year by law, but yet it's a dead end. To actually get those superintendent evaluations, we just went through a hiring process and we didn't see a single one of them. You know, to actually get those, you got to requisition it from open records request to the. Districts, by the time you get them, well, it's all said and done. I think some of our legislatures need to take a look at that and how that process actually looks and then, to me, this is not as complicated as. Perhaps even as correspondence shows to, to look to, I think that a performance bonus. Gives a lot more teeth to the desires of a district and working with a superintendent to, to get something accomplished than. Some of the other things that were proposed, like legislature, well, schools of so and so size can't have superintendents and stuff like that. So, I don't know, I'd be willing to, to spend a little bit of effort to try to figure this out, to me, it's pretty straightforward. I'd really like to understand, though, why Rachel thinks it has to be part of the continuing contract.
Especially saying that that would have to be the minimum for the following year.
Right, it's, it's, it's one of those things where if, if you do it one year, then it's automatic for following year, so. She told me that several times.
But following years for the contract, though.
She even contradicts herself because she says that if, if it's not spelled out in century code, we can't do it, but then there's nowhere in century code that spells out that you have to. Have that as a continuing part of your contract, so, I don't know.
But if we give him ten thousand dollars and then he's at one hundred and twelve five the next year.
Right, then it's.
And this isn't going to work.
Right. And that's not the intent, the intent is around performance, trying to. Set certain criteria to milestones to reach.
Regardless, one way or another, this is law and she can show us that this is law. And he has rights to that.
Right. Yeah, that's kind of what you're, what you're at. And the North Dakota School Boards Association office is, Alexis gave me the name of Amy there, is their attorney. And she said, if we want to work with Amy, we can hire Amy and get her, get her opinion and work on it. Which I'd be certainly willing to do, you know, to try and sort out or figure out a way that you can, can kind of do this, this additional compensation without making it. Because it really won't be part of this contract, it's, right now, it's going to stand outside of it, because this contract is just a base, just a base contract, so. I mean, I can do that, I can work with, I mean, two of us board members can certainly work on that.
Can we ask her if there's any, I, I know she said she's not aware of anybody that's doing it in the state, but. From my understanding, she doesn't cover the whole state, though, right? She only covers this half of the state.
Covers the whole state. She covers the whole state. She called me, oh man, I can't remember thing, last week, Thursday, there is nobody in the state that's doing this.
No one.
No one. So we're treading on.
Did she say in her email here to?
Okay, this, I talked to her before this email.
Okay, she said in here that there's a proposed resolution in a delegate assembly, so is that something that's going to hit the, and there's a lobbying effort, is that something that's going to hit the? The floor of the legislature or something? Actually was adopted as a result of a.
I think she's talking about the, the.
Oh, she's just talking about the signing bonus, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
About the, yeah, century code that she was referring to, the, Rachel's.
The signing bonus, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's past tense. But yeah, I, I'd be, I'd be still willing to.
I think you should call Rachel back and sit down and get this sort of clear and cut from her.
Yeah.
I mean, let's get it, let's get it clearly, clearly what we're asking for and what we can and can't do, and then if we want to. Get somebody else.
Have her cite where it says we can't do what we're looking to do, but she just cites signing bonus end of it.
Right.
We want to know about.
But she also says that, you know, like Damian said, you know, century code doesn't give you the authorization to do this, well. Doesn't it, we can't?
Yeah, where does it give, not give us the authorization?
You know, I haven't getting clarification.
It seemed kind of weird, so, I mean, yeah, if you want, I can work on it, I can work with, I can keep. Another thing to do is draft on what we do want to do and propose it and have them tell us, no. You know, I would simply say that we're going to offer up to a ten thousand dollar performance bonus. According to key performance indicators set by the board and the superintendent candidate in a. Commutative agreement and just, that's it, that's simple, just tell us we can't.
Right.
And show us why we can't.
Right.
Right.
I would go that far with it, rather than a whole lot of back and forth. And if we're the first school district to do it, fine.
Because she does say. That it is not a sign, a signing bonus, but instead wants to be give, give him a performance bonus.
Right, but she didn't cite where it says about performance bonus, she only cited where it said about signing bonus.
And then from here forward, all we do is set a committee, sit down with Mr. Ziegler, line out these. Indications with a graduated rubric scale.
And he asked if he could be involved in it.
Yeah, it would be wise.
Yeah, but I mean, he did, he did ask.
Yeah.
That was one of his questions when we.
Sure.
Were talking about it.
Good deal. So.
Yep.
See, they gave us, we want to offer a performance bonus based on. Up to ten thousand dollars based on. Just, I would use. Key performance indicators, KPI is the standard acronym for it, determined by the board in conjunction with superintendent. That's determined by a board, okay.
Like board and Ziegler, though, I would put both, because then he understands what he's getting into as well, obviously.
I think that piece is only important because imagine as you take this to another level, you could. Get into a legal discussion of whether or not the superintendent doesn't, has to or hasn't, does not be involved in that. I could see the state.
I think the key here is, she says you're, you're allowed to give, the only bonus you're allowed to give is a, give a licensed employee. You know, because he's a licensed employee, I think that's the, why she's saying you can't do it.
Well, let's get it clear, let's get it clear for her.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly keep doing that legwork.
Yeah.
Um, you know, because it's our intention, that we still, we desperately want to do that. Do we want to? Go the next step and actually start figuring out the, the key performance indicators and that kind of stuff?
Well, I would say not yet until we know for sure what you're doing.
Let's get this nailed by first, okay.
Either having it so well for nothing.
He could go so far as to set a time with Mr. Ziegler to sit down and do those, because he probably want them lined out before June.
Right.
We had set a date in May to do that, or call for. You to set a date with him for that, just to. Do you want, do you want to be on that committee, please? You seem to be the one who knows, knows more about these bonuses and key performance indicators, so. I mean, I can work really on that, yeah, I appreciate it, if you guys are good with that. Okay, well, not as simple as we thought, but, that's alright, we'll be trailblazers. Okay. Back, so then back to the contract, I think we should put an official motion in, you know, on the books here regarding. Two-year contract, or Russ Ziegler, two-year contract, one oh two five base salary. And potential ten thousand dollar bonus, if we can figure it out.
Was there a bump in the next year already, or?
Oh, and with, yeah, one oh two five year one. One oh five even year two.
Okay.
That's a three percent, do you want to do it?
Sure.
So we'd be determining the base for two years right now?
Yeah.
Right, two and a half percent of all?
Right.
I mean, it was, it was what, it was what he negotiated back with.
Sure.
And we're talking, we're like, yeah, it's something, I mean, it's something good.
I'll make a motion to issue a two-year contract to Mr. Ziegler for the first year base salary one hundred and two five. With the possibility of a ten thousand dollar bonus, if allowed. And year two, one oh five even, with the possibility of a ten thousand dollar bonus, if allowed. I'll second that.
Okay, okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries, alright, I'll work on that. Keep the conversation going. Okay. Anybody else have anything before I leave this topic, you're, we're good? Okay, collaborative bargaining update.
We finally received word from Horace Mann and Health Equity and they could have sent us this a long time ago, but. Basically, it's saying that you need to keep your 403B or your annuity separate from your cafeteria plan. So. Employees, it says for the same reason employers should not allow employees to directly designate and flex credits for contribution to the 403B arrangement. Employees may however make a separate election outside of the cafeteria plan for reduction of taxable compensation to code 403B arrangement. And initially, that's the way I thought it should be, is you have that cash option, you have, if you take the cash option, the taxes come out. Then the money can be put into an annuity after that. So both the annuity and cash options should not be in the. Flexible benefit plan. However, we should have our HSA in there. So we're communicating with them on that and then I sent. So basically, I cleaned up the language and I attached two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then the proposed one. And basically, it remains the same, it just becomes more general. So we took, we're referring to the plan as the flexible benefit plan and not saying one twenty-five, eight, and so it's now just flexible benefit plan, okay? And basically, it's any expenses above the district's contribution will be considered a pre-tax payroll deduction. Any benefit amount not used towards a flexible benefit plan will be paid out to the employee subject to FICA and will be consistent with the annual salary. So then, when it comes to enrollment time and you say, okay, Amber will be available to say, okay, if you want to put this in an annuity, you have that option. To do so, you can take it for cash, you can, however. So I'm waiting to hear back from Rachel to see what she thinks about the language. She asked for a deadline, I know contracts come, are supposed to come out April first, so. I gave her April first. Even though it wouldn't change. Even though it wouldn't change any of the contract language, we're still just. Talking about that flexible benefit portion of the.
So that would all be available until the benefits are signed off on, right?
Yeah, in the fall.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be an issue to, you know, issue contracts.
Right.
You said the HSA, do, do we offer a high deductible?
Yes, we do, yep. So they have an option, if, if they take the low deductible, then they can do the flexible medicals.
Flexible spending.
So can, so negotiations are open right now, or, or for that part of the teacher negotiation? So can this now be closed?
Or can we have to meet again with the?
Right, well, I was, I talked to, um, I gave this to, uh, Mrs. Messer and Neil also. And, you know, if you guys agree that this language is okay, then, you know, all we have to do is go to them and say, hey, this is what we want. Can you take this to your group, come back, and then we'll take care of it. And we don't really have to meet again, unless Rachel comes back with something that throws a.
Oh.
A monkey wrench in the whole thing, but that's kinda what my thought process was.
Yeah, yeah.
It's pretty straightforward, and then if you keep it generic like that, you don't have to change it all the time.
Right. So at this point, as far as, we don't need any more action at this point until we know that it's.
Until I hear back from Rachel, I'll let you know, and then if everybody's okay with that, then I'll just tell the. Uh, teachers to go ahead and talk with their group and then go forward.
So this shouldn't, like you said, affect. Contracts. I just wanna make sure that.
Yep. Okay, operation and maintenance. We actually received the Don County grant before we received approval from DPI. So I called down and talked to Mr. Teshar, and I told him that, hey, we are, you know, we have this project, we have the money for it. Um, could you fast track our approval? And he's like, could you remind me what that was? Um, so he went ahead and gave us the approval. So I set up a meeting with City Air, and we met today. And we discussed, um, the project and. Uh, proceeded with signing the contract and getting things going. The unit's probably, what did he say, fourteen to eighteen weeks out?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, I mean, it's plenty, but it's not as bad as the one we ordered. Last, wow, July, end of July, early August, that showed up beginning of March. Same kind of unit. Yeah, and just to remind everybody, like, I mean, we had, we had approved this project several meetings ago. Um, but it's a unit sitting outside the, the gym at Taylor, so it'll sit on the north side of the wall like we had looked at, talked about. Um, they'll set that on a pad, I actually asked them if we could get piers or footings down, so that it doesn't, isn't moving up and down. Duck work outside the building up, and then popping through a pie shell, insulated duck work up.
Some.
No, it's the north.
Is it the north side?
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Inside that door. Yeah, out the door of the gym.
The door on the north side.
It's on the north.
Okay.
So anyway, yeah, I'm sorry, end wall of the gym, same wall the scoreboard's on.
Yep.
So he'll go up the outside of the wall, pop, they'll pop through the masonry. With a supply duct, once he gets inside, he'll tee two directions and then run two. Um. Fabric ducks, they call them, flexible fabric ducks. Or duck socks, they call them. And they can be red or blue, and so they'll be more on the edges of the, of the court and, and, and running.
Yeah, so.
And he thought we'd get up in the rafters.
Yeah, so the best scenario is to get those as, you know, out of the firing zone in the middle, so.
They're up in the rafters.
And if they're, there's, the rafters come down that far, so they're thinking that if they go way over to the bleachers and over to the stage. And get as close to the ceiling as you can, then.
Yep. So, I mean, it's a, it's a really inexpensive way to zip duck work, you know, down, so. And I mean, hopefully it looks, it looks good, I think.
There's a lot of gyms that have those.
I just, yeah, definitely see them. Um. And then a, you know, a little bit lower in the wall, they gotta cut a return, turn, a return grill through and get back out for return. We just kinda were talking about, like, oh, don't make that too low, or don't make it, you know, where they're gonna run into it when they get the wall or something. Kids run into it, but. They'll figure that out, um.
Possible reverse osmosis.
Yes, humidifier, okay, all this is included in there, in that bit, electrical hook it up, humidifier. Um. We think, they need a drain for the humidifier, so I'd suggest they go right above the locker rooms with that, above that, which would be the north locker room. Set that there and then pipe it over, then pipe the steam over to the duck work, or they can even blow it right out directly in the space, actually, we talked about that, but. Um, the one extra that they're gonna look at to that is a reverse osmosis system to feed the humidifier. So your humidifier stays cleaner, less maintenance. There's clearly a maintenance thing there for sure. You could run them both ways, but. We did, we did all the water for this one, and it's much, much better.
Water, so.
Yeah. But. He was gonna look at if we didn't, possibly didn't need a water sound.
Yeah, he didn't think we did.
I still won't know that we needed one here, but it's up to the water guys, see, they say. Um, what else was extra? Oh, the footings for the unit, setting the unit outside, like I said, I just suggested they take a few piers down. To get below frost, he's gonna get back to us on that. Um, yeah, I think that was pretty much, a thermostat, it'll just be a normal thermostat.
There will be no ETS controls, cause if that building isn't set up, like, in the future, if, you know. There's upgrades made over there and that system is put in, then it can be easily tightened.
Yeah, it's compatible to ETS system. Yeah. So, yeah, with any kind of luck. Early summer, midsummer, and a lot of air conditioning. So, yeah, that's that, unless you have any questions on it.
On that project?
Yeah, it went good, it's actually simple. You gotta show it up. So, other one is that MDU electrical here by the football floor.
Dan Golsner from Danny sent me a email the other day, and, um, I got him and MDU talking, so. Um, Mr. Golsner was coming out to take a look to see what we needed to do, and then, so they were gonna work together and get that scheduled. So we can get on the docket for, and we told them, you know, we want it, um. Separately metered, and then underground transformer, or, and then they, they own the transformer and.
Right.
We dispose of it.
Remember what the costs were indicated on that? I mean, MDU had a cost, and then we don't know what Danny's cost yet, right?
Right. Dan will come back with a proposal.
MDU's wasn't bad, I don't remember it being that.
I think the, the major cost is gonna be the elec, the electric.
Oh.
I don't know if there was even, was there even a cost associated with it from any? Well, I think talked about like disposal of the transformer and stuff like that, maybe, but I don't.
Yeah, I, I didn't remember exactly what they talked about. Okay. Any other, anything else on that project?
Nope.
Okay, new business?
Um, we have a family that moved from. Richardson to Gladstone, and they're currently students here already, so the open enrollment deadline is waived. And it's a second grader, ninth grader, and seventh grader. And we, we'll call it a young family. And we'll just do them all as a family.
As a family, okay.
I'll make a motion for a young family growing up.
Okay, you got a second?
Post, yeah.
Second by Shannon, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Oh, we've got some sad letters of resignation here. Okay. Got it.
Okay, the first one is from. Uh, Mrs. Mason for head coach girls basketball. And. In speaking with Mrs. Mason and Mrs. Miller, uh. We would like, we, what we're going to do is we're gonna move Mr. Miller up to the head coaching position. And then open the assistant. Coaching position. Um, Mr. Miller is all on board, he's totally excited about it, and. Mrs. Mason, that is her recommendation as well. And then he can select his assistant coach, I think he already has some people in mind. It's always good to have people who are on staff as coaches.
Yep. Yeah, teacher coaches are good.
So my only concern with that is if, then we're gonna have to probably look for something for junior high then.
Yes, and there's a possibility there might be three coaches for.
Right. Because, I know he was doing a lot this last year.
Yep.
And so.
He was going in a lot, so yes, we would have to.
Cause we can't expect him to do that.
No, he wouldn't, cause they overlap.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, cause he kinda did as assistant coach.
Yeah, and we talked about that, so we'd have to look for a junior high type of coaches.
Yeah, I, that was my only.
Yep. And then.
Are we doing it individually or one at a time?
Would classify, well, for the coaching, we don't need to do that, do it.
But we have to accept the letter of resignation.
Oh, yeah, for the coaching, we probably should.
Sure, we have to accept Jordan Mason's letter. For coaching.
Yeah, for coaching.
Okay, um. A motion second, okay, all, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, our next letter of resignation. Mr. Patterson.
Yes, Mr. Patterson has submitted his letter. Which will need more approval, I don't know.
Would you like to tell us, you know, we kinda already know about where you're going and.
Sure.
What you're doing and what led to your decision?
Sure, um, actually, is it okay if I just read my letter?
Sure.
Sure, that's kind of my personality, so.
Sure.
So to the Richardson Taylor, uh, school board members, I'd like to inform you that I am resigning from my position as elementary principal and career advisor effective at the end of this. At my current contract. Um, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to work alongside of the excellent educators in this district, and I'm proud of the hard work and the great strides that we have taken. Their dedication to student success is motivating and evident in all of the decisions they make. Thank you for the potential you saw in me and providing me with my first principal position, that has been nothing short of a blessing. And this decision to accept a different position was not taken lightly. If I can be of any assistance moving forward in this transition period, please let me know, cause I want to ensure the good work that we have started continues for years to come. Uh, so I accepted a elementary principal position at Roosevelt Elementary in Dickinson, uh, so that'll be my next chapter and. It sh- it surely wasn't planned, so I'm still in, in that middle ground of. Um, going through that process, so. But also my personality, next year is next year, and we got work to do this year, so we'll make sure that we finish strong and get, get things done that we gotta get done and. Again, all about setting things up for success in the future.
Okay. Well, thank you for this year. You know, I, 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 truthfully, you did a nice job for us.
I appreciate it.
Wish you could've stayed?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, with that, we have a motion to accept that, or can we just simply deny him?
The power is in your hands.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Okay, we got a motion for a second. Need a second on the, no, twenty, okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
What's the process for, is then we're gonna advertise for that, or is it automatic, do we need to?
I think we need to. Quickly advertise, right? Um, but then, you know, the discussion rolls to, you know, do you wanna keep the same, same job description? And, you know, the things we, we wanna, you know, do different or change, or, you know, and I, I don't know where we go from here.
I think that's something for.
You know, as far as, you know, is there a committee to discuss that or figure that out? I mean, we're not gonna figure it out in this boardroom, but. But, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's something you can look at with the combination of principal and, uh, I believe career counseling. Um, I guess I'd be curious to know the other positions that we have that are combinations like that, how that's working, which ones are on provisional licensure. Um, see if there isn't some mix, I guess, guys, if there's anything we could do, like some input on. What does it look like, your workload, um, in terms of, does a part-time principal, part-time. Career counseling, how does that fit? Um, I think we should just take a look at that, we've got quite a mix going on, some of those types of positions. I don't know what that looks like, if we want a committee on that, or if we're part of a board meeting.
Well, is that, I mean, is that personnel committee, or do we, or do we usually?
It's a personnel committee, and, um, I would recommend that you have Superintendent Ziegler in there. And some staff from T R E.
I think, I think Dwayne and Damian are, you guys are not personnel. Two. I mean, assuming you guys, if you guys wanna do that, I mean, we just, we need two board members to, you know, do it, but.
So what are we gonna be exploring, what we're gonna be offering, or is that what we're doing, or? Yeah, I don't, I don't know, like, like I said, if we wanna, cause if you wanna explore, should the position remain exactly, you know, reposted exactly as it is? I mean, I think we should advertise for a principal right away. You know, and then at the same time, we're working on, if we're gonna work on a new job description, work on a new job description, but.
As soon as we can get that figured out, the better off we're gonna be.
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely, the sooner we can advertise to, I wanna get that.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we know, is the, is there any elementary access to counseling, not, not career? But.
Mrs., like, just our normal counselor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Scott Singer is over there Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Tuesdays, Thursdays, okay.
She goes in the each classroom and teaches lessons, and that is available to students.
Okay, so she is doing classroom lessons?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, obviously gotta look at the big picture and what, what it all entails, and if, if we wanna change anything, you know, maybe we don't, I, I don't know.
I think what we ended up with was the result of a lot of people, positions were made because people fit. I'm not sure if that's the case anymore.
Yeah, it might not be.
It's budget too, I mean, we have, I mean, we've never had a full-time principal over in Taylor.
Sure.
Since, ever, because the student numbers don't, don't.
Question.
Don't need it. You know, so it's like, so we gotta be careful, I mean, budget-wise, we can hire a full-time principal. And then when it comes to teachers, when it comes to salary, we're gonna be short of money. So, I mean.
Well, I think we should, down, look at it.
We gotta balance it out, I mean, look at it, see, and then it could be, if you only have a part-time career counselor, who are we gonna get? I mean, we have to look at way everything and see where we're gonna be at.
So, we have to keep in mind with, cause I just went to a counseling, cause I'm going for a master's in counseling. So I went to a counseling conference, we are at the point where we have to have more than one full-time counselor. If that includes the career counseling, it's like three hundred and twenty-five, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we're like right on that border. So if Sarah, we'd have to check the numbers to be sure, I can't remember what they are offhand.
It's three hundred.
It's three hu-
School.
From K twelve to, and now? It changed this last year. I'm pretty sure with the legislation. But, so we might wanna double check that, cause if you put the career counseling back on Sarah, I think that's how we are within that number. For her too, because she's not doing career counseling and the, the K twelve counseling, I'm not positive.
Career counseling is totally separate.
Is it?
It's CTE.
Okay, cause I think we're rate on, depending on our numbers, we're rate on that.
For every three hundred students, you need to have one. For every three hundred students, you need to have one counselor.
And we're on how many students?
Oh, it's, okay.
Three thirty from.
Three thirty.
Are you counting P K?
That's with P K.
Not three, I don't, I think that's with three K, but yes.
Yep, yep.
So it's close.
Yeah, it's close.
But we just need to.
But that's, that is specific to the career counseling funding, that's a separate part of the funding model, is that correct?
You can, you could, no, you cannot get reimbursement for career, sort of, career advisors, and that's what you would mean, correct?
Correct.
It's not a career counselor, it's a career advisor.
Okay.
And, and it doesn't have to be this being, I mean, I went through all the training for it, so I can sit down with you guys. Because, because there is a difference between a career counselor and a career advisor.
Sure.
Even though it's similar, but there's some, there's some differences there. Uh, but I will highlight, I, I mean, you guys have the right to do whatever decision you want, obviously, but that combination is not the reason for my decision, it was a family opportunity.
Sure.
Because I wouldn't have taken, I wouldn't have accepted a job if I didn't want to do that job, you know?
Do you feel like, could you give a kind of a rough idea as far as how many hours a week you spent on career counseling?
On a perfect schedule, I was here, I would be here about six hours a week, a Tuesday A M. and a Thursday P M.
Okay.
Okay, you were here, do that, that tail those are working? I mean, you were doing.
Through my training, so it would include a once-a-month Bismarck training. And then as far as the career side of it, any kind of like career fairs or things like that, that would be my responsibility to go to.
Extra help if the kids would need to, I'm sure.
Yeah, we have meetings.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So a perfect week, what was probably the average in actuality?
That I was here.
Yeah.
Well, no, that you spent as a.
Time spent. As a career advisor. Those six, probably just a few hours on my own, in my, at, at Taylor though, looking out things and doing work on my own.
That's what we need to know, yeah.
I mean, just sort of carry on, so yeah, it was just.
Ten hours a week.
Ten more.
Four, four on my own, and then the six here. You know, but then that schedule is certainly flexible, because it's hard to stick to that, so.
Yeah.
Some days I was here Monday, some days I'd be here, be here Wednesday, it's a little bit longer on the other day, you know?
Right.
Thanks for that.
I believe my contract was seventy thirty.
Yep, I think so. Okay. Just other, as far as, you know, relating to the principal position. What's the board's wishes in, on hiring a principal using a, using a committee? I think in the past, it's been a committee of our two board members, you know, that are on personnel, superintendent, principal, and usually, I think, a couple of teachers, I think was our last committee, do you remember Amber?
I wasn't involved.
You weren't involved, okay, yeah, that's right, but, um, I mean, do you guys wanna stick with that, or, or do you wanna make it a, a full-board thing? You know, keeping in mind when it's a full-board, it's a meeting, it's for air and televised and recorded. There's pros and cons to both, I, I agree.
I, I think at least us having access to, if it's a, a meeting where it's not full-board, having us access to zoom in, to listen to the interview or whatever, because and not participate in it, but just listen, because I think it's important that all of us know what we're doing versus, not saying that I don't have the confidence in the two of you, but just knowing what we're, how the interviews go and personality, and if it's somebody that has never been in our school system before or whatever. I think it's important for all of us to be able to make an informed decision. Like, my guess on that, John, for equality's sake then, is that if you make interviews, that, one of two things, if, if you're just making that board members can call in now, that, that's a board meeting. But not, not to participate, just to view. If you make it public, well, but then you gotta make it public to say that we're just participating in it's public, and that's a big step to say, all right, now our interviews are public.
I think all interviews.
That, that'd be my hesitation to know, I, I kinda think that would be the case, I don't know. I'm wondering if we can ask on that, just because it would be just, like, no audio, no, just, you know, right, video. Yeah. It would be much less. True. Talk back and forth, just listen. Yeah, no, I agree with you on, on the desire, I just wonder about the principals and that.
Didn't Alexis say we had to do it with the superintendent, we had to keep it live?
Well, the superintendent we do, because we're all participating in the interviews, so.
It was, it was part of all participating.
But didn't she say we also had to keep it?
Yeah.
Keep, right.
Yeah, uh, what I'm saying is.
Well, we wouldn't have had to. Our, our livestream is still our choice.
Oh, right.
You know, so if we.
We have to still record it.
If we decide we wanna say, no, no, we're not gonna livestream anymore, do that.
Okay.
We, we can do that.
With a motion.
Yeah, we, we can.
Right, but with the interviews, it's inequality then, it's just that if you choose to start moving to public and televised interviews, then you have to do it across the board. You can't pick and choose, okay, we do it, but, I'm not so sure if you can do it with administration and not, plus, I don't know.
I don't know why we wouldn't be able to, I, I mean, it's.
I'd like to dig into that, figure it out a little bit more, just because.
You want me to ask the question?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Great question.
And, and, and under the understanding that it's not a participating in the meet, in the interview or the whatever, it's just solely listening to it.
Right, just, yeah, so that's not, doesn't become a board meeting. One more question, that way.
Because there's plenty of times that there's three of us in the building at the same time that we're at a basketball game or watching a football game or whatever, that, it's not a board meeting, I mean, we're just have family that are participating in the event that we're at, you know? But I will make a motion that we post the advertisement for a elementary principal position. We can work out the details on these specific items.
We work out the detail, okay.
I'd second that.
What are we offering?
Right now, I would, I would post the principal, just so we can start getting applications. I would just post the position on, what do we do, jobs indie, we do indie sell? I think it's important because there's contracts that are being offered already.
I get it, I know, but what, what are we offering, are we offering a full-time position, a part-time position? I mean, you can throw it out there, but what are you offering them?
Well, I don't think it hurts to throw it out there and start getting applications and then go from there.
So you're offering a, there's an open position, but we don't have the job description yet, is that kinda what we're saying?
I mean, that's exactly what we're saying, really, right?
You know, here's what the job description was, it may or may not be the same. I mean, that might be a safe way to do it too, like, hey, here's what it was, so just so you know, this is what it entailed before, we're, we're looking at changing it.
It's fine with me, I'm okay with that, just so we.
You know, yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss out on advertising either, I'm letting, this position's open, so we can get get people thinking about it, looking at it, whatever it needs to be, but. So that makes sense, how does your motion read?
Just a motion that we advertise, and I don't know, do we have to specify, where, do we have a standard set of where we do advertise? Before we get too far, so I got a quick question, so since we didn't really post for the coaching job, if there's somebody internally that would be interested in this, can we ask them first and see before we post it?
They would have to apply.
Can you do that?
You mean, principal position?
Do you do that with an, with an admin?
I'm just curious if, how that would work if, so you don't have to post a position for coaching? Well, because that's the difference between a certified and. Yeah, that's, I'm just, I'm just curious, if it, one is setting precedent for the other or vice versa?
No, that's totally separate.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about just offering the coaching position without having an application process?
Right.
Okay, perfect, that was my question, I shouldn't have phrased that.
Okay, so we got basically a motion to open the position. And a second, John's second, okay, more discussion on that. Amber, are you clear on what we're doing? Okay. Any more discussion?
One of the items I would like, and we might as well request it as a board, is a, a layout of what our current positions and, uh, split is. What do we have for all the different, uh, not so worried about the classified, but the certified positions and what our current split is. Like, you know, the seventy thirty here, I just like that information, I think it might as well be to the whole board. Basically, it's all, all the job descriptions.
Yeah.
Or just position and.
What every position is.
Just position and, and duty split, time split, is that, Amber, how difficult, is that something that's readily assessable, or?
That's, we probably only have two that are probably his and Dr. Vogel with his post slash laboratory.
Oh, it's. Kind of multiples?
Other than that, all of our, none of our contracts are, I mean, it's just a teacher, like, they don't have double duties.
Okay.
We have some classifieds, but, uh.
Okay.
Like Paris Cooks, Paris Librarian.
So certified, though, you don't have any duty splits, the duties are just as per assigned?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what would be helpful, what that would be a, a description or a list of every, every job, though?
But we have like Alicia who teaches music and title. So that's one.
So, yeah, she would be probably the other one, I mean, so.
Right, it's all teacher, but it's.
But that helps her, though, what else could we, if you don't need it?
Right. But I, I think that's what he's talking about, he just wants to know what, so like, they're re, re, going over and seeing what the splits could be.
You could just write it off as staff names.
So where I'm going with that is this.
Yeah.
Duties.
I, I think the, uh, the ability to get a principal and have teaching duties is probably more broad, opens your abilities to principal candidates than it does with a principal with a counselor. I fundamentally have a problem with principal and counselor for two things, one, not so much career counseling, but principal and certainly emotional, uh, physiological, that, that the, that support counseling and an administrator, putting those duties together is just frankly unethical. You know, I doubt a thirteen-year-old girl that's contemplating suicide is gonna go to a principal for, for counseling. Uh, but I think it would be wise to just take a look at that ability to offer a principal, if we need to balance for budget reasons, whatever. Hey, how about open to other, other options and knowing what our staff is capable of across, certainly licenses are public information. But, but that's one intent there is just to, to, to look at the candidate pool for that.
Like a principal slash music teacher.
Yeah, often principals, in, in small schools, principals, uh, being in the classroom, frankly, it's usually good, it's a usually good outcome uh, to have them one or two classes, I think that's historically something that was done quite successful. So that's mostly why I'm interested in that information.
Mr. Miller and Mrs. Martin would go back and forth to.
Same position.
Moreover, the, the counseling and some of those require a separate masters for a reason. And a duty that has two masters, especially if we're on provisional, to me, that's, that's questionable, now, I know the state has gotten very comfortable with provisional licensure with the shortage, and, and I appreciate that challenge with shortage, but I think we should do our best to.
It is, right now, it's a principal, career counselor, career advisor.
Career advisor.
Yeah.
Career advisor.
Counselor, so we're not doing that, I guess. Okay, we still have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, so you know, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries, so we will advertise. Okay.
I'm just gonna take the lead on I don't know, basically discussing or setting up, we're gonna set up a committee and then discuss, um, job duties. Yeah, I think, I, I'd be all for the committee that you, as you described it, certainly answering John's question of what it looks like for interviews.
Yep, I'll take care of that.
Yeah. But, yeah, I'd say as far as putting a committee together, I think, is that something Dr. Vogel would do? We can assign her to her, she's not here.
As far as lining up staff, you mean?
Yeah. Kinda nice to have someone taking the lead, organizing, just give us some meetings, so, yeah, let's figure this out.
Well, I think, what did we have, two from Taylor? I think so, Robin was there and.
Mrs. Singer was there, Laura was there, Kelly was there, you were there, Jovi.
Yep.
And me.
I think Dr. Peters sent him up last time.
Right, but he was not there.
No.
He was at my.
Oh, yeah, he was.
Was he?
He was.
He was in some sweet workout clothes.
Ah, you know what?
Nevermore.
He was, he was at all of them.
Yeah, I, I sure, like, we were totally obsessed with this, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, he was.
Mr. Barry's too.
I think T R E should pick a couple of people that they wanna put on it and.
Okay.
I sure don't wanna pick them.
Well, I'll get a, like I said, I'll get a national tour, Zoom call question.
Staff competition.
We're not covering that, we saw that.
Yeah, that was terrible, still hearing the commotion.
Okay, moving on, R A C T C report.
Okay, we met last week Wednesday, they got a new anatomy table, and they have another name for it, but boy, it's quite a piece of equipment, I mean, they, you can lay out a human, the human body and they'll punch it in, and the blood, you see the blood flow. And, I mean.
Yeah.
So I texted in to Dr. Vogel, and so we get it in rotation here.
Oh, okay.
It's a seventy-four thousand dollar machine, they're gonna move around, and it's awesome, I think it's gonna be a great tool for our kids to and they're still looking at, um, reorganizing, still working on that, running a little bit of hit, hiccup, because our teachers would have to go under Dickinson Public School, and we have a different negotiated agreement than they do, and so salaries don't match, they would take a huge.
That would be tough for them, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, that might be what stops us from doing it. So, and they're working, we're working on that, other than that, signup starts, and I think Dr. Vogel for the new year, she's involved in all that already, so.
Yeah, I think they got, I think they got that figured out, where they can make those classes work in their schedules this year.
Yep.
Are they, are they offering many classes in that, in that new combined career tech center yet, I mean, is there much, what's going on?
Just in that group, that.
That office building?
Right, that's where they're doing all their teaching so far that I'm aware of.
Okay, so so far, there's, I know there's a couple nursing classes.
Right, there's more classes going on in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then, are they doing welding, or are they doing?
Well, there's welding.
Heavy equipment yet, or?
Yeah, there's welding that's going out and heavy equipment. There, the meat trailer is down and heading there for cutting up meat, I mean, that, that, all that stuff is still moving around.
But is that the, still just R A C T C doing it, or is it also the?
Well, I think Dickinson Public School is tied in with like the welding and the heavy equipment, so, because the kids are gonna have to travel up to it.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's kinda weird, they got that new career tech center, but then R A C T C is, you know, outside of that, but you're kind of both cooperating.
Right, but trying to mesh the two together is gonna be.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's an interesting scenario.
For sure. That's all I got.
Okay, uh, R E S P. Nothing left. Yeah, I mean, okay, um, okay, next meeting, April tenth at the new time, at seven o'clock. I was half wondering if tonight we're gonna be, it's, because we switched daylight savings, usually goes together by day. Next meeting, seven o'clock.
No, you didn't.
Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.